Here.
Mr. Camcart.
Present.
Mr. Scissor.
Present.
Chair Bookbinder.
Present. Thank you. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. For wave instruction, my name is Adam Bookbinder. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. So has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections? Do I have permission to approve the minutes?
With approval of our October tenth seven minutes.
Second.
It's up to your call.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Magister.
Aye.
Commissioner Strosky.
Upstate.
Commissioner Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Camcart.
Upstate.
Mr. Scissor.
Aye.
Chair Bookbinder.
Hi, kind of, will you hear this? Okay. Thank you very much. Director Eastwood, do you have any communications agenda modifications or postponements of which you notify the commission?
Chair Bookbinder, I just want to call attention, staff sent a desk item on business item number three, the study session. No changes or no other communication.
Thank you. There's the desk item. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Next, communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters of community concern that are not listed on the agenda. You have such a time, chairman may limit speakers to five minutes. State law prohibits the commission from acting on non-agenda items. How we may refer items to staff follow up open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Anyone online? I'll close the public hearing. That brings us to agenda item number two, PLN twenty twenty-three dash eighty-three forty-three Harrison Avenue. Dave. It's a kind of a long bit here, but I'll read it. It's a public hearing to consider the request of Salvatore Caruso on behalf of Ainsley Plaza LLC to allow establishment of an outdoor beer garden inclusive of a freestanding bar, restroom facilities, mobile food truck staging, seating area, live entertainment platform, trash enclosure, children's play structure, a fourteen-foot tall entry gate and related site improvements, and minor exterior alterations to a structure of merit commonly known as the Ainsley Corporation Headquarters Building, related to its adaptive reuse as a restaurant with indoor dining space and new kitchen facilities on property located at forty-three Harrison Avenue. The application is under consideration include a conditional use permit with site and architectural review to allow outdoor retail sales and activities, the beer garden, late night activities, staff closing cleanup after eleven P M., a liquor establishment, on sale beer and wine service, and dancing and or live entertainment establishment, and a tier-one historic resource alteration permit. And the planner for this is Daniel Fetter. Staff like to be on the presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This is an application for a conditional use permit with sign architecture review and a tier-one historic resource alteration permit for property located at forty-three Harrison Avenue. So here we have, yeah, there are photographs that shows the property. This is the location of a structure of merit on the city's historic resource inventory list known as the Ainsley Corporation Headquarters Building that was constructed in nineteen thirty-seven in the commercial brick style. It is located west of the Ainsley Park parking lot and north of the alley located immediately to the south and within the new CBMU, that's the central business mixed-use zoning district and general plan district. And just note that this application is not related to the separate application for a new taproom building located to the north on that vacant parcel here. These are just two separate applications that by coincidence both involve beer. Unrelated. Here we have some photographs of the project sites. The building is faced up against the parking lot. At the time that it was built in nineteen thirty-seven, this was part of the Harrison Avenue roadway that the city since then has reconfigured the right-of-way to a public parking lot. The rear of the site remains undeveloped with the DG surface as shown in the photograph to the right. So in terms of the applicant's proposal, does include multiple elements. The primary being the conditional use permit for what's commonly known as a beer garden, which for the purposes of our zoning code, we are defining as an outdoor retail sales and activity use. So that would include the outdoor seating area and children's play structure along with a mobile food truck staging. A mobile food truck would effectively park on site and would provide food service to the site. Association with the food service would also be beer and wine service, which the city zoning ordinance classifies as a liquor establishment, and that would be in association with the food provided by the food truck, as well as a kitchen that would be constructed within the historic building as part of its adaptive reuse to a restaurant. Staff can also proposing ancillary live entertainment. That's defined formally as dancing indoor live entertainment. And then, although the business would close to the public at eleven o'clock, there would be some incidental staff cleanup activity after eleven P M., which also regulates the activity to a late-night activities. In terms of the sign architecture review element, that would include construction of the new freestanding bar slash restroom slash storage building, the trash enclosure and related site improvements. Fence exception to allow for a fourteen-foot tall entry gates. That's an exceedance of the otherwise six-foot maximum height and a tier-one historic resource alteration permit to allow installation of a ramp of the rear of the circle building, again, related to its adaptive reuse as a restaurant as part of the overall proposal. Here we have a site plan showing the proposed site configuration. Here is the existing location of that historic building. There is an existing paved driveway. And then in terms of new improvements, you do have this outdoor beer garden, which is the outdoor seating that would be defined by these overhead string lights. A small live entertainment platform would be located at the base of a oak tree. And then at the other side of the site, at the corner, you would have again a combination building that would include restroom facilities, storage, and a small nine-person outdoor bar. Adjacent to that would be children's play structure and a playhouse that's related to the owner's family. And then a trash enclosure located at the other corner here to serve the entire site that's been sized for refuse, organics, and recyclables. And then towards the other side, you do have a food truck parking pad, which would be the station location for the food trucks that would serve the site, as well as bicycle racks and a storage area for propane canisters for outdoor heaters for the overall site. In terms of the change, the proposed historic building, the historic building, it's very limited, effectively a ramp to the back of the building. This maintains the front facade unaltered, consistent with the city's historic preservation standards. Because this building is historic, it will really, it will receive special relief from the building code that would allow rear access as a proposed to traditional front accessible access. With regard to the new construction here, we have multiple views of the combination building that's again the restaurant storage and small bar area, different vantage points. And then the entry gate with a very tall sign area here. And then the bottom is a streetscape view that shows the extent of the trash enclosure at far left and then the distance that new bar building. And then the overall outdoor seating area constituted the beer guarding and then the historic structure at the far right. So in terms of review considerations, we can start with the downtown alcoholic beverage policy. So as the commission is aware, the city has had a policy regarding the sale service of alcohol within the downtown since two thousand and nine. The principal intent of this policy is to encourage restaurants to serve alcohol in association with food service. It strongly discourages the creation of new standalone bars. So since two thousand and nine, all requests for new alcohol licenses, beer and wine, wine bars or full liquor licenses have been in association with food. There are other operational elements to this, including a maximum closing time of twelve A M. requirement that full menu be available at all times. Basically, again, when you have alcohol, you have to have food. And that ancillary live entertainment would be allowed, but it cannot be the major focus of the operation. Again, it needs to be ancillary to the principal purpose of the business primarily being a restaurant. Now, as discussing your staff report, the concept of the beer garden is not clearly stated in zoning code, nor for that matter, the downtown alcoholic beverage policy. But this business operation has been focused to basically make itself eligible for a type of liquor license that's reserved for restaurants. And that's how it would be regulated under our code, as well as under H B C licensing requirements, consistent with the policy. And then with review to alcohol, the zoning code also requires that the planning commission determine that there is not an over-concentration of alcoholic establishments within a given area. This is a very broad and unfortunately somewhat vague concept in the code because there is no precise definition of what the area is, nor is there a particular understanding of the different types of licenses. Beer and wine is treated the same as a liquor. So the historic staff practice has effectively been tried to look at it in a more nuanced view. The last several applications have used the boundaries of defined area plans to define the overall location. So in this case, we're looking at the downtown development plan, which includes the downtown proper plus the civic center and trying to benchmark that against the city council's approval of the pre-yard master use permit, which found that for the twenty-seven acre pre-yard shopping center, that twenty-five alcohol licenses were appropriate, so roughly one per acre. And that's a ratio that's being proposed here. They would still be slightly fewer than one per acre. So staff believes that there is not an over-concentration of restaurants or bars with alcohol services in the downtown. In terms of design, though, the CBMU zoning district does have some design guidance. The guidance really pertains to the creation of new principal structures, particularly those that would be located at Campbell Avenue that have a strong pedestrian orientation with the street. That's not particularly relevant here since the new building is really an ancillary building to the overall operation and is tucked away. So for purposes of design considerations, we would highlight the downtown Campbell development plan, which does provide some guidance here, particularly with regard to historic buildings indicating that new new structures should promote the protection and preservation of those buildings, maintain a traditional architectural style, the pedestrian oriented, and also that new development should promote and encourage bumping along the loop streets. So notably, this application would bring activity further away from Campbell Avenue proper down towards civic center. And similarly, with regard to general plan compliance, there are a wide variety of policies that would be found as supportive of this application. It would foster balanced day even activities. It would provide a focal point for entertainment in the downtown. It would be a distinctive outdoor dining area. It would protect an historic resource. It is a high-quality innovative and distinctive architectural design for this interesting site. And it would overall encourage the adaptive reuse of a critically important structure of merit important to the city's history. I move you on to some other considerations that we did look at noise. So with a proposal like this, there was some concern regarding noise that would relate to the live entertainment aspect of the business. So the applicant did provide a noise study that did include a recommendation for an electronic limiting of the audio system, which has been incorporated as a condition of approval so that noise would be limited. There are other conditions of approval pertaining to noise as well. Live entertainment has to end at ten o'clock. If the city does receive verified complaints, the business operator is obligated to work with the city to try to address those complaints. And then that could include reducing the hours, adjusting the volume of the speakers, requiring preparation, but another noise study. And also, live entertainment is subject to live entertainment permit that's separately processed by the police department and approved by the city council. That also does provide additional protection and leverage if necessary to address an ongoing issue that cannot otherwise be addressed. With regards to safety, there is an existing public walkway on the adjacent property. While this does appear to be private, it is legally a public walkway that was created while that development was constructed. It is subject to agreement to which is part of the city's party and effectively is an indefinite easement that connects the civic center sidewalk to the alley area. So staff is recommending and further into general plan policy to, for the project to install additional lighting and to cut back the shrubbery along that edge so that that walkway can be visible and illuminated and encourage its use as part of this application. In terms of the gate, here we have the streetscape juxtaposed to a view of the project site here. There was some discussion that unfortunately was not highlighted in your report at the sign architecture review committee. Commissioners, as you did, highlight some concern about the gate as it related to provide pedestrian access to what is currently a vehicle alley. That is an element that staff did consider in terms of pedestrian and vehicle safety, but given the low vehicle speeds in this alley, staff do not believe that it was a concern that would otherwise preclude creation of a gate here. Now, there is also a secondary entry for the site. I'll look at it along the north part of the project location. That would also be for the accessible entry. So this is not where individuals with wheelchairs or other impairments would access the site. Because this is a listed structure of merits, the code did require that the application be reviewed by the historic preservation board that did review it late this summer. The board found that the brick materials complementary with, but not duplication of the historic material of the building. And there is a condition of approval that will require the applicant to provide a sample of the brick material prior to issuance of the building permit to ensure that that maintains the case. And the board also determined that the placement of the new building opposite the historic building based on the other side of the property would minimize its visual impact, consistent with the secretarial standard for treatment of historic structures. And then lastly, with consideration of parking and traffic. So as the commission is aware, state laws have tried to de-emphasize historic privacy of private vehicles, particularly in downtown through various legislation adopted over the years. These include the complete streets law, A B thirteen fifty-eight, that compelled cities to adopt complete streets policies as part of the general plan. And that was intended to encourage a multimodal connectivity to really minimize how important cars are treated in pursuit of other ways to move people around, particularly bicycles and pedestrian activity. Recently, A B twenty ninety-seven entirely exempts projects within a half mile from any parking requirement, which is the case here. Had that law not been adopted, this application would have otherwise required city council approval because the code previously only granted city council authorization to waive parking requirements in the downtown. And then in terms of traffic, S P seven forty-three reoriented traffic analysis to vehicle miles traveled rather than the classic level service model, again, to de-emphasize the importance of vehicles. This is all to say that while an application like this may result in more business and potentially more traffic in the area, those are really good things. Those are no longer really a reason to deny applications. Therefore, based on an affirmative determination of the required finding for the application pertaining to the conditional use permit, sign architecture review, a tier-one historic resource alteration permit, liquor establishment, and fence exception, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving a conditional use permit with sign architecture review and a tier-one historic resource alteration permit. Now, in attendance, we do also have Captain Ian White and Sergeant Brad Rice from the Campbell Police Department. Should the commission have any public safety-related questions? With that, I will conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much for that extraordinarily thorough presentation. Any questions for staff? Let's start going this way, that way.
First one's basic. Does the gate open in or out or both ways?
Believe that.
Into the. Okay, so that, the answer to that. From the downtown, if they clear the path, is there any plan for like signage or anything else to like let people know there's a business back there?
Yeah, there would be really no building. That would constitute an off-site sign.
Got it. And I noticed, like, I think the photos that were included of the actual patio area seem mostly like stock photos and were actually photos of the intended design. Am I missing it or do we just have like sort of renders?
Yeah, those are concept photos.
Okay. Is there, is there a later date at which we're like looking at the rest of it or is the concept that we're moving it like prior to seeing what the?
Well, we have elevation drawings of the new buildings. So that's certainly something you're seeing. In terms of the exact furniture, that is an element that would be addressed at the staff level.
And I guess my only question on over-concentration is like, I think the table were super valuable to understand that aspect. I guess this might be a question for the officers, like, how are we doing downtown generally about calls for service, crowdedness? Like, what's our? How are we looking?
Yeah, probably a more appropriate question for Captain White.
Yeah. Thank you, Preston.
And please introduce yourself, just for the record.
Very, very awesome. I haven't had this system on before since the last time. Ian White, Police Department Captain, in charge of field services. Guy's hard patrol element. And thank you commissioners. And this is Sergeant Brad Rice. He's our administrative sergeant. He's one that reviews these plans for the department, provides guidance to planners. So to answer your question, I would say thankfully, post-COVID, crowds have returned, but they've returned in a way that hasn't been super problematic. I think the last time I presented to this group, we were dealing with the problematic bar with some problem issues and those seemed to subsided as well. So I'm happy to report that I think we're doing well, so.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Okay, well.
I have a question for.
Sure, we'll try and keep this organized. Go ahead.
Yeah, so. Do you have? So in terms of, we have problematic states or periods and then they are not problematic. Is there something in terms of a trend or some data that you can speak to? Yeah, I mean, is it really about density of liquor establishments or is it some other factor?
Well, I think, I think the downtown bar plan that Daniel spoke about, that where council really set out expectations of how we moderate hours of service. And I think what we tend to find is that the longer the alcohol service goes on into the night, the more problematic the drinking can become. I think that that policy, that downtown bar policy or alcohol policy has served us really well. With a lot of the new businesses coming in, that cutoff of eleven P M. seems to really help with it not turning the crowd into bad behavior or police service enhanced calls, which. So yeah, so I think this is, when we look at a project like this, it meets those parameters and becomes less concerning.
So if I understand right, it's mainly about the duration into the night that a place stays open rather than the total number of alcohol establishments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Captain White?
Yeah, the same stuff, your captain, just trying to be clear. So we don't have a objective criteria of over-concentration. Seems like Daniel, David can report to answer questions if you just have the answers. But it seems so, reading into, so we don't have an objective, real objective standard. We're going by yards ratio per se. Subjectively, it seems to me, and I'll just ask this as a question, is we would, we would, the city of Campbell would consider there is an over-concentration problem. When the police department starts to get a lot of problems, that pretty much would be concerning.
Well, at that point, you're over-concentrated and the problem's there. So I don't know how you resolve it. So I think it's a little more complex than that, right? I mean, you have to look at the type of establishment, the type of liquor license they're asking for, what type of, you know, what's the overall? You know, when you look at a plan like this, what's the overall intent? You know, is this going to be a nightclub that stays open until two o'clock in the morning and draws in large crowds that could get rowdy and be very, very packed in with people, which presents a lot of safety and security issues for law enforcement? Or is this more of a family-oriented food service drinking establishment? So I think you have to take each, and each presents different problems, right? And I think statistically, what we see is it's not so much a how many people are drinking, it's how many people in a concentrated space, how much are they drinking? And how long does the drinking go on for? And what's really the environment around that that tends to indicate what we see from a, from a calls for service?
I'm just getting at, I just, so I, because we've had a few of these come up. Talk about over-concentration and everything seems to be fine downtown, not having any, that one issue. So I don't know, yeah, so it's, it sounds to me like it's a subjective decision. Hey, we do have an over-concentration, but how do we get to that? So we're going to have another taproom right next to this one.
Sure.
And the same thing, was it over? Well, I don't know. Like, you just answered the same question I had.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know. And all of a sudden, we do have a problem. So how do we, how do we as a government entity is to say, you know what? At thirty-five places selling alcohol, maybe that's too many for this area. How do you?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a fantastic question. I wish I had a, I wish I had a better answer.
No answer, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, what I can tell you, kind of to pick you back off my previous answer of things seem to be operating very well at this point. I will say that we're very proactive when problems, as you guys know, do, do come up and bring them to your attention and handle them. So, you know, and I wouldn't, I don't think we would be here saying that we don't see an issue here if we had concerns over, over this project. We'd be the first ones sounding out along.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to announce that we first viewed this in the S R committee. I happen to know the architect that worked with him on other projects. So I asked the attorney about making sure that the doctor recused myself and attorney said, I don't, I don't need to. So I want that to be on the record, please. Now, as far as, I think my colleague brings up a great question, you know, how do we know? You know, and you know, it seems like the way we know is by inviting experts who can tell us what their experience is and having protection in the conditions of approval. That if there are calls for service, then maybe hours can be adjusted, you know, and that's how you moderate, you know, how the load is on our, you know, and so if I'm not mistaken, can, if there are issues, then does this department have the ability to maybe change the hours or change conditions to try to, you know?
Maybe first for staff.
I'll say the conditional use permit does have conditions that have ability for the director to modify some of the operational elements of the live entertainment the hours pending the application coming back to the planning commission. But separately, the police chief also does have some authority under the live entertainment.
I see. So, so there is a way.
There are many mechanisms.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
This is, this is on a slightly different perspective and some of this you may be able to answer and some of it may be more appropriate for staff. One of my concerns that I brought up in S R was, was the fact that the entranceway, main entranceway that the applicant is suggesting is on the, on the alley. That alley is, to my best understanding, an alley where the trash is picked up, deliveries are made to the back of like all the restaurants and whatnot on Campbell Avenue. And, and there's some parking spaces. There are a handful of parking spaces. The office building at on the Central Avenue side, there are some reserve parking spaces for the offices. And then there's a handful of parking spaces that are parallel right across from that gate. Narrows the alley down. And it's an alley. Doesn't have street lighting. It's dark. I might actually walked over there just before it came here. I've been by it a number of times. So, so the idea of increasing the congregation, this is not about speeding vehicles down the alley. This is more about more people congregating in a back alley late at night, at the end of, during the time they're open in the dark. When they're closing down, there will be more pedestrian traffic on, on that back alley that extends from, from the Blue Line Pizza parking lot to Central Avenue. Okay? I don't know how many people will. I don't know how many people will be congregating around, we can only speculate. But the fact is, is that we are making, we might be approving an entranceway from an alley that's never been used that way before in the city. So, my question to you is, from a safety concern, I know you haven't had a chance to really, I'm not sure you've had a chance to really think about that aspect of it. Is there anything that you might be concerned about, that alley would actually have more pedestrian traffic during the hours that this, this place would yield?
It's a good question, I think, so when you look at it, there's actually outlets for kitty blooms, around Cal is there, we do get pedestrian traffic, and people actually unfortunately congregate in that alleyway behind the bar as it is. I mean, it's been a while since I've worked with nights, but I do recall that. So, I think it.
Those are employee entrances though, right? I mean, they're, they're places where the employees take the trash out, and then sometimes people go out.
I guess those are the intended use purposes, how they get used is, you know, different, I guess. But I think it, and staff, we actually did discuss this previously, and I think additional lighting was discussed, I think the idea of video surveillance for that area was also discussed. And I think the police department is proponents of both of those things being included. The police department is also taking the ability to live view video surveillance from private entities of public spaces that could help with security concerns there. So, we would be a proponent of all of those measures. I think as far as, as the congregating, I think that gets back to the hours of operation and what's the, you know, what, what is the service, the primary service client? What's the target service clientele? And I think that that's where that 11 o'clock cutoff really serves the downtown area well. It really limits the number of bars that we have letting off at, at 1:30 or 2:00 in the morning. It creates kind of a pressure release where we get some disputation of the, disputation, excuse me, of the crowd at the 11 o'clock hour, when the restaurants really shut down, and then, and then we're really left to deal with a few bars that remain open. So, I think there are ways to address the concerns you have, but I think they are, I mean, they're concerns that need to be, to be thought about, and we have discussed them and thought about them, I think there are ways to mitigate it.
That's good, thank you. Very much, are there any other questions for Captain White? Thank you very much for your time, let's continue with questions for staff. Briefly, yeah, just in terms of the security issue. So, there is a condition of approval that does allow the police department to require preparation of a security plan that could include private security, security camera systems, additional lighting, as well as additional security sign. Okay. Jessica, do you have questions for staff?
Um, yeah, I have a quick question, so the existing building remains, but that's the only building. And then, what are the restroom structures going to be?
The restroom building is, it's building, so it's kind of an echo, basically, a rectangular brick building with a shed roof with a bar. So, it's gonna serve three purposes, it will be the bar, outdoor bar, the restrooms, as well as the storage building for the overall operation. Commissioner Crick?
Yeah, Daniel, thank you for the report, that was really good, just a quick one, just so I'm, just so I'm clear on, I did look at the, and I know they have to get zero, the drawings, but, so there will be, also be seating inside that building?
Yeah, so the building itself is gonna be adapted to a restaurant, so it will also have a kitchen in the exterior, as well as indoor seating.
And the kitchen though will be kind of a limited kitchen, that's why there'll be a food truck?
Yes, well, I mean, the kitchen is necessary, so the kitchen will be supplemented to the food truck. I mean, the, we did check with ABC, so ABC did indicate that they would not issue a restaurant license with just a food truck, unless the food truck was involved once. So, there is a requirement for this business to functionally operate with a, as a restaurant, with a kitchen still being inside that building.
And I said, you did the noise study, that was good. There's a, I just wanted to ask, there's a real small little dirt lot right north of this, I think we're talking, is that all by the city, just?
Yeah, that's, that's, that was reviewed as a study session, a preliminary application earlier this year. So, that's proposed with a new two-story tap.
That was the tap room, that little triangular?
Yes, that little tiny piece property.
Wow, I, I wasn't quite sure that that was it.
It's deeply different, and that will be considered by the commission likely earlier next.
Just leading to my final question, and I know, and I, now that I know that there's some improvements planned for Civic Center and Harrison, it's like they're trying to make it more of a.
Tea intersection.
A regular tea intersection with, where people can walk across the street. So, if, all of a sudden, this area downtown that's pretty dead right now, we get a couple of commercial establishments kind of in that corner, if there's an issue of people actually parking on the other side of Civic Center Drive, on Harrison, that area, is that, that become an issue for the residents of that area, or no?
Well, I meant sorry, in terms of just parking?
Yeah, with, yeah, street parking.
Well, I mean, there is.
Could there possibly be a street parking issue? People are, are coming to this, these establishments on that end of downtown, but now they're saying, well, it's easier, shorter for them to park over on Harrison than anywhere else, because they just crossed the street and they're right there.
And they most likely would use the library parking lot, which after library hours.
It is open, okay, all right, okay. I just wondered, just wondering.
So, parking on Harrison?
I think, a little bit further up. Yeah, what else to know, just, so while the city does have plans, and there is funding for design work for that intersection improvement, it is not yet fully budgeted. So, it's not anything that's gonna happen in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crick, all right, Camper?
Thank you, sir, so, my concern was regarding operations, and I brought that up in SARC. So, this food truck has to get in there and then get out at some point, right? So, in order to get there, you know, it seemed like it might be best for it to back in and then be able to drive out forward. You know, because I guess by the time it gets in, it's, would be lighter and less crowd. And by the time wants to get out, there might be more cars, so it would be safer for it to, to drive forward and get out then. I just wanted to make sure that that's, has that been established as a condition? Or can it be a service condition?
It can, but that seems to be an element of the operation that we didn't need to be overly prescriptive, since we're not the experts in how that would operate. Yeah, I mean, fundamentally, they have an incentive to ensure that this works for them. I doubt they're gonna wanna try to pick up food truck in middle rush hour, but that would ultimately be their decision.
Right, okay, I just, I just, you know, if there was room to turn around on site, that would be probably the ideal, you know, forward in and forward out, you know? But if not, then, you know, I'm sure there's enough lighting, there's enough room, there's enough width, you know, for the alleyways.
I think that can also speak more to the operational element there.
Thank you.
And before I ask a question, I'll just say that we covered this in SARC. Yeah, it was my understanding that the trucks could come in the morning, and there's not gonna be, probably not gonna be very many people in the parking lot, it's gonna be clear, be able to back in easily, such that then they can drive out forward. Okay, so my, my other questions, the captain answered some of my questions about the alley. I, I have other questions as to whether or not in the DRC, this was discussed. This is, this is about congestion on Campbell Avenue and in the parking lot could occur. I'm quite familiar, I walked by that area three, four days, days a week, late afternoon, early evening. I actually was over there today, and I'm getting to my question. At 6:00 PM, and this is Tuesday, the Campbell Avenue was backed up two blocks to the railroad signal, back to First Avenue, First Avenue, First, so, which is a real common occurrence. And that was at 6:00, that usually lasts for a while. The, the parking was full on Tuesday night, the, the, there's 12 parking spots in the, in that parking lot. They're all full, and actually, there was no legal parking, you know, no parking zone that is right at the entrance to drive. There's like two places where cars can stick themselves, where it says no stopping. Yeah, I'm getting to the question. The, there's, I think most people understand the difficulty in finding parking in Campbell, and especially in the evenings, and especially weekends. And so, I, I'm concerned about what's gonna happen. There's one entry, there's one, there's one run in and one out of that, of that, well, you could go down the alleyway, but that's not probably gonna be practically, you basically pull in to go to the pizza place, and that's full all the time in the evenings, between patrons and, and Uber and DoorDash guys waiting for their pickups. So, the, the parking lot's gonna be nuts, in my estimation. It is nuts now. And so, my concern is that, as we know, people drive around looking for parking spaces downtown Campbell on these narrow streets, and they, they go every which way. And so, I, I, and there's, there's a light right there that stops everything. And, and that's where you pull into the parking lot. So, my concern, my question is, has there been taught, has there been discussions about what, what kind of congestion that we might experience that would likely back up Campbell Avenue even more? That would cause congestion in the parking lot such that people could not get in or get out? Those are the kind of things that I would envision as a potential problem, and whether or not there would be possible mitigation to that.
There was some discussion of traffic congestion, but as we noted, planning is moving forward in a manner that's less concerned about the convenience of drivers, particularly in the downtown. The downtown development plan encourages more development, more intensive development. There will be more cars, there will be more traffic, there will be more congestion. That is the nature of a developing downtown. The city's transportation improvement plan is not looking to make it easier for drivers, it is looking to make it safer for pedestrians. So, that's fundamentally what city's policies are trying to do. For that reason, we are encouraging the safety measures along that walkway, because we do anticipate more people parking at the library, crossing Civic Center, and coming from the north, and we want to make it more, you know, safer, more enticing to actually do that, so people don't try to park in that little parking lot. I mean, I would imagine that once an individual waits for half an hour to access a parking lot of 12 spaces, they probably won't do it again. And ultimately, there's a lot of factors that go into the operation of the downtown, and those really are beyond the scope of this one particular application. It is something we do consider, but realistically, we, the downtown is developing, and that's more the critical goal in terms of those general plan policies. Those general plan policies do talk about developing, so they do talk about bringing more development towards Civic Center, and this application does not.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand, Daniel, I understand the business about traffic on the streets that we have to deal with in general, it's like we're not, we're worried so much about traffic on Bascom, or the traffic from the Prune Yard to the downtown, or the traffic on Manchester. But I'm talking about this, and I, and I, I'm not proposing this, I'm just, and it seems to me that we do have a responsibility to, if we see a potential for not just significant increased congestion, that we could look at possible mitigation in some way. I'm not sure what the answer is, but, but that we should be looking at. I mean, we, we approve, in the past, we've approved parking configurations, and, you know, had, had, and we're, we're approving. But so, so to me, it seems to me that we should at least be taking a look at, what's gonna keep, i- is there going to be a four-block backup, okay? Instead of a two-block backup for hours? Okay?
So, if I can just.
Oh, no, but this is really important, because we could vote on this.
Right, that's, this is more.
And so, so I think, I, I think it's.
If I can further address the question to some degree, any traffic study like that would inherently expect to be this, because you would have to make an assumption of really how many vehicles would approach the side from this one parking lot. And I don't think there's enough data points to really make that assumption. People are gonna be parking in multiple lots, I mean, it's just, it's a multi-point solution. You have individuals throughout the downtown. Again, to what extent one could assume that an X number, number of vehicles would try to access that one lot for this one business, is really too speculative for a traffic study to come to a conclusion. But I think the broader issue is that the commission's purview is on the operation of private parking lots. This is really getting on to the impact of the public streets and the public traffic operations. And that is something that is overseen and monitored in real time by our traffic division. They have, I've seen, there's a bunch of cameras, they actively block these intersections. If there's a situation here where they may need to install additional signage or clear signs, now that's something they may do, but that is really beyond the scope of this one particular application.
So, so we can't put in a condition in terms of requiring, like, for example, cars go in there and they park where, you know, there's no parking, okay? So, we can't, we can't have an enforcement policy about that.
Well, that's city property, so you can't compel the city to do something, you know? And this, and this is not a private parking lot, this is a public parking lot, this is city parking lot. This is not part of the project site, it's an entirely different thing.
So, the, the, the parking lot that's, parking lot that's by the pizza place, that's a public parking lot?
Correct, so that actually is.
Oh, that's a public parking?
Correct, that's the Harrison right of way.
I didn't know that, okay, so, but, so we, we do have authority over that parking lot, right?
No, because it's a public city parking lot, it's not a private parking lot.
It depends on who you're talking about when you say, we, the city has authority over that.
Not the plan.
Not the planning commission, correct, all right.
I have a question, and I thought I understood this, but now I'm a little confused. So, in this application, does, is there any parking requirement that we are considering with this application?
Yeah.
Yeah, so is parking discussion in scope or out of scope?
It is now out of scope.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So, one thing that I'd like to discuss, but just to remind the commission, per state laws, cities generally don't look at level service congestion anymore, it was taken out of the environmental quality act. Cities still does have some obligations under its congestion management program. In general, the city does not look at congestion as an issue to look at.
And this is in relation to the fact that because it's near, within a half mile, as the crow flies, of a public transit stop, there is no parking requirement anymore?
I wasn't really talking about parking requirement, I was talking about the issue of access and possible problems the city would have in that particular location. I mean, I, I, I.
It's, it's also a tenth of a mile, not just as a purpose, but did you have any other questions?
Uh, no, I think we're ready to. Oh, you? Oh, you?
Yeah, me.
Last but not least.
Thanks. I'll, I'll keep it short. In terms of AB 1358, do we have a complete streets policy or do we just have a plan such obligation to produce one?
We actually came into compliance back in 2015 with the prior general plan, so.
Oh.
Actually did do that.
Like an amendment, I thought our primary, prior general plan was in 2000, like we had an amendment.
It was amended though, 2015, the land use and transportation element.
Oh, cool.
I do have one more question. So, did the police officer say that as a result of the 2009 city council changes, alcohol what?
The alcohol beverage policy.
Alcohol beverage policy. So, they made a point that the alcoholic, the situation kind of calmed down in Campbell as a result of those actions. And they made the point it was because we didn't have late night drinking where things just get out of hand. That was correct. It wasn't because we have fewer bars or more bars, it was specifically because they're just not open as late and people aren't drinking and getting more and more drunk and being rowdy.
Well, we didn't contribute to the problem by adding more bars that were open past midnight.
Yeah.
Policy had a hard line at midnight in practice. Over the last few years though, it's actually been to hold the line at 11 o'clock.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, it's good that they presented what they presented and the situation is under control.
The last question I had was, I didn't see the sign on the, on the plans, is there bike, is there like a bike rack provided?
There is, up here. There's a condition of approval though, I didn't really get into, but to kind of look at somewhat better placement for those two features, but there's a bicycle rack.
Fantastic, thank you.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
On the, on the west side where the walkway is. Is the intention to completely, you talked about trimming back, trimming back. Is the intention to fully remove all the foliage that is there?
Most likely, most of them, I mean, most of it's being removed anyway because the building's gonna be up against that property line. So there'll be lights, basically building mounted. And then you also do have a trash enclosure down here, that's also helping it's on property line. So there's really only a small portion of area that left that actually has any vegetation, so most.
There's a lot of bushes there, at least there were up until recently.
The idea they, they, to get, to make it actually enticing, it's really.
I, I don't have a problem with it, I actually think it's a good idea to remove. I'll interrupt you, I just wanted to know whether they were gonna trim it back or they were gonna remove it. So you believe it, it's gonna be fully removed?
This may be a better question. And that is a condition of approval, and those are a lot of little details that we deal with as part of the building, with state, but yeah, that's, that's something we'll be discussing more closely with the applicant.
Alright. Just no further questions. Sorry, I'll open the public hearing with the applicant like to speak, thank you for your patience. Please introduce yourself. Pardon me, would you mind introducing yourself? I'm sorry, for the record, so it's, just tap it, it'll go red. Please introduce yourself and begin, thank you.
My name is Saltor, so I am the project applicant for the Ainsley family, specifically Alan Hicks, who's the great grandson of the Ainsley house owner, builder, right behind us. So you've raised the project site location, I won't spend much time on this. However, the project gate that was talked about is directly aligned with the alley that goes all the way out to East Campbell Avenue. So it's fully aligned and that property is actually owned by Mr. Hicks' cousin, as is the property directly on this side here where we're gonna be trimming the bushes and adding lighting. So that's all originally Ainsley property that's been divided up over the years. This is the original structure that we retained and restored fully. Backlog you can already see. This is the prototype of the open bar and family seating area. This is a family-friendly development to have basically a place where families can go. Tricked together, not unlike the two pictures, the right-hand column of last weekend's Uptaker Fest here in downtown that I enjoyed quite a bit. This is the Graylands House, which is Alan's grandmother's home. There's a replica of the Graylands House, a small playhouse that was for his mother, that will be placed on our site for the children to use today. So it's being fully restored and be a replica of, is a replica of this. It's actually already an antique. And that particular structure will go right next to the gate. The gate is located here and then that little playhouse is right here, the Graylands Playhouse, and the play structure is adjacent to that. This we've already got over, it's placement and location on the site. The layout, internal layout of the building on the lower right-hand corner shows the indoor seating table layout. These are the original labels, so the Ainsley family was famous for having the patent on the tin can. Tin can that revolutionized how people were able to develop in California. Gold Rush obviously used the tin cans for beans, food, et cetera, et cetera. So part of the growth of California is actually gratitude to the Ainsley family. The spout house also goes back to their roots in England. The original spout house is in England and is dating back, I think, to the 1700s. And that's why the specifically Ainsley Spout House, it's a historic name, it uses on historic structure here in Campbell. So these you've already seen, I will not spend time on those. But overall, as a picture, the goals and objective of the project are to create a place and space for food and enjoyment. We really believe that in conjunction with the police department and the planning department, what we've worked out was illuminating the alleyway on both sides. Will actually create a safer environment for the patrons and not lesser, but a greater, more usable and safer environment. Parking is not considered, as we've discussed, it is according to state law. It is exactly what the state law passes legislation, so downtowns can actually be downtowns like they are in Europe, like they are on the east coast where people can actually go and families can go and enjoy some space for goodness sake. And really create a place that is, has a synergy and excitement and energy to it. So we, I'm very excited, I'm honored to be part of this project. It's a long-term goal. I have several children that live here in Campbell in town. And they're super excited, since I went home and told them on Sunday, hey, guess what? We're gonna be doing a family beer garden for everyone here in Campbell. They were extraordinarily excited because they said, that's one thing we don't have, where kids can play outdoors rather than being confined indoors all the time. And just enjoy some time and space with the family and friends. So, thank you so much, I'd like to turn over the mic to Mr. Alan Hicks, who's here, the great grandson of the Ainsley.
Okay, good evening commissioners. Okay. So I'm Alan Ainsley Hicks, grandson of John Colbitz Ainsley. We own, we own two properties in Campbell, one's the Harrison office, which was original Ainsley Corporation office. Which succeeded the Canning Corporation, which was sold, disappeared. So we have that office, we have the Graylands Professional Office Center on East Campbell Avenue across from Campbell Park. So we wanna keep the Harrison office, and my mother really wanted to keep it as a legacy of family. And we're working very closely with the East Museum, Kerry Perkins. We wanna make it more like a living museum, have the Ainsley House Museum. We wanna work with them very closely, bringing back the early days of Canning through memorabilia, photographs and things. So we wanna do it, it's more a collaborative thing with the community. And we're looking very close to the Chamber of Commerce, as that, that are love, the chambers here. And I've gotten extremely, I'd say enthusiastic response. Every time I bring it up, it's, it's a very enthusiastic response. In fact, when I first met Rob, before I could open my mouth, he said, you're gonna do a beer garden over there. So I kept getting this positive feedback, the family had talked about this spout house, Jackson operated for the 1500s and the Ainsley's operated it from the early 1800s. And now it's in the National Park in the Bookshore Moors. So basically, this is a, the way I see it, and my family sees it, this is a community project. And wanna keep it going with the Ainsley family. And I wanna also say we're thrilled with what Kerry Perkins has done with the Ainsley House, with a variety of activities that were there. If we wanna augment that, work together with the community as much as we can. And so it's not just a business venture, it's more than that. And that down the road, you know that's gonna get, the Graylands Office Center is gonna get developed. Once we get this rolling a little bit, we wanna, Sal's already agreed to work on some plans for it. Anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, your dear question.
One last closing statement, so the original safe that you see here on the monitor, that's where the, the family records were kept for all of their businesses, the Canning business, et cetera. So that'll be one of the private dining rooms in the new restaurant. And the whole restaurant interiors will be covered with the original labels and artifacts and ledgers, their old business ledgers will be all over the room. So it'll be, as Alan mentioned, the living museum, where you can go in there and experience the legacy and history of Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you, are there questions for the applicants or on this side?
Largely outdoor space, what are you doing when it rains?
We have umbrellas and we'll be using those, they'll be outdoor space heaters, so similar to an outdoor patio space.
And I don't know how much of this you've decided yet, but like, how would you describe the atmosphere of the patio? Like, what are you going for in terms of, like, you showed some sort of aspirational ones, but you know.
That's pretty accurate, actually. The.
Like, that one?
Yeah, you know, where you see that the, the ground is not, you know, asphalt or anything else, it's decomposed granite. It has overhead lights and it has just tables and activity of people, that's pretty darn accurate.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the detail that, you know, kind of the added color that you put into this in addition to the staff report, which was excellent. And it's very nice to meet you, Mr. Hicks, thank you for all the history and everything that your family has contributed to this.
Fisher, great.
No questions. Thank you.
Yes, my question, that's great. But I, I do wanna, I do wanna say that, yeah, I. We had a discussion, so. But I, I thought, I, I like the concept, I support about it. I, I really don't have, I, I was gonna ask about the rain, but. Regarding the, regarding music, okay, so there's a mention about acoustic guitar. Is, is, is this the plan, basically have a guitarist or two, this kind of music, this kind of low level background, this kind of thing?
It, it's a mixture of types of music and I think that if we go back to the overall site plan, what we did in, in for the sound study, we specifically placed our speakers for the sound, the amplified sound. To actually be pointing away from any residential areas. So one is at the very back end of the building, right there, pointing towards the patrons. So the nearest, the only residents are across the street, opposite the project. So the speaker is on the back end of the building, pointing towards the patrons. There's also a, a, a vertical pole there, slightly there to the left at that point, and it's pointing towards the oak tree, towards East Campbell Avenue. So the speakers are strategically placed, pointing towards the patrons of this business and away with its back towards any residential area. So that's how the amplified sound is being contained and that's why the sound studies came back saying there is no impact to across the street because it's well-designed within how it works and operates. So to answer your question, it'll be a mixture of types of music, there might be singing, guitar playing, some other forms of music, but it'll be a mixture.
I do have one other question, maybe I should have asked for a second, but I didn't see any lighting at the exterior of the restrooms. I don't know whether or not.
The building will be lit and that'll be handled with staff and.
Okay, so the building will be lit and the restroom entries will be.
Absolutely.
The entries to the restroom will be lit.
Full.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions, I'd just like to say it's a nice to see so much thought going into this. See, is there anybody else here who'd like to speak? Come on up, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Dan Orloff, I've been business in Campbell since 1977. I am part owner of Prune Yard Cinemas and Seeger Room. Incoming board president of the Chamber of Commerce here in Campbell. I'm on Campbell's Economic Development Strategy Committee. I say all of that because with all of that background, I'm proud to be associated with this project. I have a marketing firm and it's selling what I lovingly call the Campbell Condition since 1977. And this is like a legacy project in my mind. As I come from a family of historians, attracted to Alan's passion to make history come alive for us. And as we know, all of us that serve Campbell, it's about quality of life. Some of that's mixed with economic development, some of that's mixed with soulful type of activities such as what will happen at Ainsley Spout House. So I'm here on a, officially, on behalf of the Campbell Chamber of Commerce that we wholeheartedly support, Ainsley Spout House, and we're encouraging about the firm of the blue for this project. Also wanna compliment staff remarkably, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else here want to speak? Please introduce yourself.
My name's Ryan Slater, a community resident, friend of people here. I've lived in Campbell, we bought our house in 2008, had three children there. And we've been here a long time and what I would say is this is probably a project we wanted not long ago. So this has been something we've been waiting for, I've already taken my kids to the section where they probably would play. So we're really excited about it, we hope you guys are too.
Thank you. So I believe that's everybody who's here, is there anyone online who'd like to speak? Without a post-public hearing. Thank you everyone for giving their opinions and start discussion, starting this end.
I'm almost surprised how little public comment there is for a new bar in downtown, I guess this is one best observation I have. But my impression is that's because it seems like a super thoughtful project that is not gonna attract the kind of, perhaps like negative connotation you could have from another establishment. I particularly like the historical preservation aspect of this. Not too long ago, we had that Blue Line Building in here, right at the same end of the street that they're keeping historical and making sort of faithful. So I just love this end of Campbell Avenue sort of retaining its history. And I agree with the gentleman who just commented, I think this is like a use that we don't really have downtown, so it's nice to see something a little different, not like another Italian restaurant. New, and so I am fully supportive.
Yeah, I feel the same, like Ryan said, I've been hoping for this for, since I turned 21, pretty much, I've lived in it my whole life. So I'm, I'm excited, it's, and it's, every time I'm at a venue like this, it's always very family friendly, there's kids running around, it's joyful, doesn't feel seedy or dangerous. And that, I think having the police officers comment for us on that they're supportive says it all, so. That's all I can say, thank you. So I am a mom, I have three girls and I think everybody who knows me on the planning commission knows that, you know, when I look at a project and it's usually a development project. I'm always asking the question, where's the area for the community to get together? Where's that place that's gonna pull people together? You know, we can build a lot of units, we can house people, but we can't create that space and that environment for people to come to be outside in California. You know, where's the, like, parking or where's the, the play area or where's the, like, rooftop place? How do we, how do we use the environment? How do we use the weather? How do we use the space to really bring people together? And for me, it really is like all about the focus for the kids and not just the kids. And not just the kids, but the combination of what the parents want to do to relax and then, and then have their kids entertained at the same time. And, you know, I love the idea of the historic little playhouse for the kids. I love the idea of the climbing structure. I love the fact that, you know, there's, it's gated. So you have that element of safety. You have the gate that opens not to a busy street, but to an alley, a nice quiet, well-lit, you know, alley. And it's just such a nice property. It's super conducive to walking. You have a lot of, you know, in the plan, the idea of connecting downtown to the, to the prune yard and kind of creating more environments to do what I just said. We have Campbell Park. So this is really a place that you could take your kids to Campbell Park and then walk over, get some food, be in that outdoor beer garden area. So I'm just totally thrilled. You guys have really checked all the boxes. I can't wait for this to happen. And I also want to add that that kind of combination of having the fixed restaurant bar area and then having the flexibility of having the food trucks come and serve different kinds of food. Like, I just think that's such an exciting thing. And when you get your Instagram account and you like let people know what food is coming and then those, those food truck followers are going to be there. Like, it's just such a nice way to bring the community together. And, you know, the gorillas that they have at the prune yard are such a great place that kids love to go there. And that's really kind of the only place in Campbell that I can think of that the kids are super into going and climbing. And, you know, I've met other parents of kids and it's like, really does bring people together. And this is going to be that, but even to a greater extent. And then I also wanted to say, so that's kind of the angle with the adults and the little kid aspect. And then the historic piece and the living museum that you mentioned, you know. So my middle daughter is seven and for her, when we go to places like little towns, they have things like this, that living history. You've got pictures on the walls. You've got some of the artifacts and we're always talking about, look at this picture. Like this is what life was like in the old days and like to see a tin can or to see like a beautiful piece of art on those cans. Like, that's the kind of thing that, you know, it's like great to be in an actual place with that, that isn't a museum that you are having to take your kids to a museum. It's just part of that entire experience. So I think it's awesome. I can't wait. If you need any help, let me know. Thank you.
No, I, I agree with all my commissioners, what they've said. I just definitely is, I think it's a plus for Campbell. It'd be really nice. I'm interested to see how it works out. I did look at the, I did see where the speakers were placed and then did look through the noise study and I thought that was, that was pretty well done. I don't think there's any issues there. And, you know, I love the building. It's really a hidden gem. I've seen it, you know, a few times. I've kind of always wondered about it. What a beautiful little building there and they're not really making any changes to it. Just a little thing on the back. I guess the only possible red flag, and that's going to be the move, the owners, the managers of the restaurant is you know, a couple of things do make this a little different, which are, which are its attractions too, but it's you know, it's, it's an alley entrance to a, we have outdoor seating in other restaurants, but this is the only one I think with, with a full bar. That's kind of the attraction out there. So, you know, we just have to make sure that, that alleyway doesn't become a hangout for whatever. But obviously the type of project that it is with the children's playground, children's playhouse, et cetera. It's family friendly, early, early hours, closing and everything. I think any potential problems are very, very small. I think it'll be a good asset for Campbell. Happy to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I conclude with everything my fellow commissioners said. I'd like to add to it that now there's competition for the water tower. You know, there is another attraction about Campbell. So I'm excited for it and looking forward to attending when it's there. Thank you.
In terms of appreciation for the project, I have nothing to add that, as Naru said, I, I think, I think it's from the moment I saw it, I thought it was a good idea. And my concerns associated with the alleyway was, you know, probably was the only thing that really stuck out to me. I am concerned about congestion and getting into the parking lot and stuff like that, but that, that'll, that'll hopefully resolve itself. And that, and that the, and the CPD assuaged some of my concerns with regards to not, I didn't know about a security plan and, and having lighting in the alley and having security cameras. I think that would make a, that will make a huge difference. I think it's clear to me that the police obviously police potentially think that there could have, could be problems with the, with the alley access. So, so the fact that there will be mitigations that will be put in place assuage some of my concern, much of my concern about that. And so I like the design. I think, I think it'll be, I'm guessing it'll be a pretty popular place as long as as long as craft beer keeps, keeps, keeps being a popular thing, I guess. I don't, I'm not a big drinker myself, but I know there's lots of people. I have a son who loves to go out and drink beer. And he has a couple of kids in a life and they'll probably show up when it gets open. So I look forward, I look forward to it and I certainly support it at this point.
Thank you. The only comments I have are, I really appreciate the thought that went into this selfishly. I've long been kind of curious what the inside of that nifty brick building was like. Walked by it a hundred times. I appreciate the understanding that we do have recourse of alcohol service causes trouble and we know something what causes that trouble. It makes me much more comfortable with more alcohol service downtown, knowing that we're not going to get ourselves into an irreversible situation very easily. I think it's a bit odd to get a noise study when we regularly get modded exhaust cars blasting down Campbell at 100 decibels. And I recognize that it's hard to not consider driver convenience, but historically it's really been the center of most of our decisions. That's it. This is a really interesting project. I forget if we said it here, but that it really was kind of a dead, dead spot downtown. And I think having more stuff there, like, I think it's a great idea. Somebody like to make a motion?
Can I, can I just?
Sure. Do you have more comments?
I just, you know, you know, there was a mention about signage and I think I said something about, you know, the property, but something came to the start was that the applicant talked about how there's a, whatever that little briefway is from Campbell Avenue to see through to the gateway, gate. And it's, it's a, it's a hard look. Okay? And so, you know, being an ex-marketing guy, it's like, I'm always thinking about ways to make things more available. You know, the brown cow, brown chicken's gone away. I believe part of the reason why they went away is because they were stuck in the back there. There may be other reasons, but if there is a way that you can make a deal, I would be a big recommender of having signage available to point the way to this from Campbell Avenue, if there's a property that you could make an arrangement with and get approval from the city. I would, I would strongly look into that because I walk by there all the time and I see most people don't even glance into that basement. Okay? So if you've got signage that says this way to the beer garden, I can assure you that it would make a difference.
Oh, I'd like to say thank you for the bike parking. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a, I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll move that the planning commission, City of Campbell, grant approval of a conditional use permit with site and architectural review to allow establishment of an outdoor retail sales and activity in your garden with live entertainment and dancing, late night activities. Staff closing cleanup after 11:00 PM. Okay. An onsite, an on-sale beer and wine service of a freestanding bar, restaurant facilities, mobile food truck staging, seating area, live entertainment platform, trash enclosure, children's play structure, a 14-foot tall entry gate and related site landscaping improvements, and a tier one historical resource alteration permit to allow minor exterior alterations to a structure of merit commonly known as the Ainsley Corporation Headquarters Building related to its adaptive reuse as a restaurant with indoor dining space and new kitchen facilities on property located at 43 Neareston Avenue. It's PLN 2023-82. I second.
Please have a roll call. Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Mr. Rogers?
Hi.
Mr. Shostky?
Hi.
Mr. Gray?
Hi.
Mr. Capcar?
Hi.
That's your system.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. I believe this decision is final unless appealed to the city court in 10 calendar days. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item three, PLN 2023-175, a study session on the Economic Development Subcommittee, which I will actually read to the record. Study session to review and provide feedback on recommendations to the planning commission's ad hoc economic development advisory committee have proposed amendments to the Campbell Municipal Code related to the remissibility of land uses in commercial office and industrial zoning districts to support objectives targeting business attraction retention identified during preparation and C's updated economic development plan. Well, somebody, please pass these to Seaton. Did you take a three-minute hold that, right? Sure. We will return in at 55 past. All right. Welcome back. All right, we are on item three. That is a study session to review and provide feedback on recommendations for the planning commission's ad hoc economic development advisory committee have proposed amendments to the Campbell Municipal Code related to the remissibility of land uses in commercial office and industrial zoning districts to support objectives targeting business attraction retention identified during preparation and C's updated economic development plan. One breath. It's PLN 2023-175. I believe our planner is Seaton Rose. Would you like to begin?
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Chair, but I'm your members of the planning commission. So this is an overview of tonight's item. This is what we're planning on covering tonight with a brief overview of the background and purpose of tonight's item. There's going to be a special presentation by our Commissioner Fields and Cam Car, which will provide an overview of the objectives and principles as they are serving as the city's, on the city's planning commission's ad hoc economic subcommittee. And then we're going to go into a little bit of a deeper dive. I'll go into a little deeper dive on the land use overview. Brief primer and overview of our city's three permit processes, some of the zoning tools which we have available. I've identified as far as update and just a few of the land use changes that have been proposed as far as this item. In conclusion, we will have a slide which will cover a number of discussion topics. Planning commission may consider in review of these changes, as you just suggested, discussion topics. And then we'll conclude with an overview of next steps.
Right, pardon, just a clarifying question. So we're not taking action for this, for just study sessioning?
Correct. So as a study session, I'll cover that a little bit more in the next steps, but there's, planning commission actions on this item is not final. It's merely serves as a recommendation that will go to the city council for review and consideration. The ultimate idea is that this will feed into the city's economic development plan update. And what we'll try to do is coordinate the two activities so that it'll be the current adoption. So we'll have at some point a finalized ordinance with red line track changes, which will come back for the planning commission for final review and recommendation for adoption with the economic development plan. All right, with that, just as a brief back summary of the background and purpose of tonight. Again, we are in the process of updating the city's economic development plan. It was last adopted in 2017. Just stakeholder feedback to date, which we received as part of that update, really emphasized challenges with the city's permitting process, particularly with some of the uses identified in tonight's item. The planning commission separately established an ad hoc economic development advisory committee to evaluate our like mix of uses and consider changes to streamline permit processes. And really that's the focus of tonight is to focus on areas where the city may easily streamline permitting requirements. And really, that's the focus of tonight, is to focus on areas where the city may easily streamline permitting requirements. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to our special presenters. Yes, and that's the key, Commissioner Fields and Camp Car.
Thank you for that warm introduction. I'm happy to do this with Commissioner Camp Car, and this is a recap of something we said last time, but mostly for. The commissioner, just sort of summarize like our process here of like, why did we do the things we did? The primary principle was basically efficiency. We initially had that data point that out of the hundred and ten CPs we renewed over the last ten years, fifty-five of them were for four uses and we approved every single one of them. And I don't want to spoil Stephen's next slide, but you're going to see how much time and cost that was to the businesses for making them come up here and it. It's not efficient. And so primarily, we want to look at things that were not controversial, that attracted a little public comment. And were things that this body over the last decade has looked at and said, we're really comfortable with these being part of Campbell. We also took multiple inputs, the city's been doing this economic development plan, some of the uses identified in that are the same uses we're proposing we could streamline. And then we also looked at the other neighboring towns, because if we're right next door to Las Gatos and they're fine with, you know, cat grooming and we have this strangely resistant approach to permitting those, like we could examine whether. How we're doing these things in the city. We intentionally are trying to avoid the sort of third rail controversial uses, things that really are part of like a long-term development plan, like figuring out what we're doing with the office part, that's not what we're doing here. We're also not streamlining the uses that have, that have attracted a lot of community, you know, contacts and feedback over the years, we can still entertain these in this forum. We're not trying to like take those away, so we're not really generally doing anything with downtown or wireless telecommunications towers. And then attached in the meeting notes and the desk item that Stephen sent out were like the specific set of changes and you can see. How kind of thoughtfully zoning tools were applied, because Commissioner Camp Car and I said like, well, we want to maybe not have over concentration and then you can see like precisely how they would look at that in a shopping center about like these gradations of. Ten percent of square footage to twenty percent and how it sort of ramps up as you go, just makes a lot of sense. I think there's just two final points, one, we're not fundamentally changing how these businesses need to operate, so when we say we're making it easier to open a medical office, that doesn't mean they're, you know, pumping chemicals into people and it's getting weird. It just means if we otherwise would have approved you, we're making it more straightforward to get the building permits, still have medical licenses, you're still getting everything else. So that's one, and then second is we're still allowing for public notification. So when you see the administrative CPs, know that those are the ones where there's still be public notification, if people felt a certain way, they could appeal. This could still come in front of us, so again, I think this is a nice update that makes things more efficient on the stuff that we've established, we feel good about as a town. Maybe now or at the end of the presentation, either way.
With respect, so are you, did you look at the idea of over-concentration or is that?
We did.
Are you going to talk about that?
Yeah, there's.
I could say my question.
You can ask the question too.
Okay, so. The question is, what is the idea or risk of over-concentration with respect to the planning process? And how is that juxtaposed against the idea, the economic viability idea that if there is. Demand for a product or service and the business is fundamentally sound or the number of businesses are sound. Is it within our, or should it be within our purview to say there's too much or too little, rather than asking. You know, leaving the business viability question up to the business and the community that's going to use or consume that product or service.
It's a good question. I think in general, even in the cases we've added over-concentration, it will still be net easier after this change, because in. Nearly every case, we're moving from conditional to a lower complexity ask, so like to your question, like is this making it harder for someone to open a business? No. Because even to answer your question over-concentration, the intent of doing it is mostly about shopping complexes, it's not about like the city as a whole, it's like individual shopping complexes. And looking at values that you don't have zero control, where all of a sudden it could just roll into twenty different dental offices. Like, and that would be the entire complex, like a healthier state is a mix of businesses, mixed use per yard, imagine like that kind of thing. But the only thing that we're doing, if you, when we look at like the specific changes, is if you're already above twenty percent, it requires a conditional use permit. They would come here, they would make their case, we could discuss it. Like, we're not blocking anyone from doing it, it's just slightly harder on the complexity scale.
Okay, I will listen to the rest of the presentation.
Sure.
That's a good start.
Great.
I, I've heard the question too, I'll, I'll talk about it a little bit more, we have a slide on zoning tools to be coming up. And I'll talk about the over-concentration tools and how we historically use them, the benefits that might be behind them. So just a, just a recap and overview, so the city really has three distinct permit processes in our zoning ordinance today. The easiest or least complex is that of a zoning clearance. This is an action which is issued by staff under the authority of the director. As part of a business license, it's usually an additional sheet that just gets tacked on the back. It's not subject to appeal or public input, so when we're talking about bringing things down to say a permitted use level, that's what we're talking about. The second tier, and that, and again, just the first item, the cost of that's about two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, takes about a week to process, it can be faster. The second tier is the administrative conditional use permit, this is an action which is approved by the director after public notice. And the decision may be appealed to the planning commission and council for three hundred bucks. And the, the cost of that is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and it takes around roughly two to four months to get completed. The third and final process which we have is a conditional use permit, this is approved by the planning commission after public notice and a public hearing. And again, as always, this may be appealed to the city council. And as of present, the cost of that, not including other miscellaneous fees like mailing and the like, is five thousand three hundred dollars. Do you say, kind of ground this, how these three categories feed into our land use table and zoning ordinance? We really have four buckets, the first is the X which is prohibited, it's more or less a placeholder in our, in our code. The P is those which are permitted, again by zoning clearance. AC is, is not on the table, you see here on the screen, but it would allow for it administrative conditional use permit where it would occur. And then C are those activities which are conditional, which require planning commission approval. So this table really would, provides a list, I think, the ad hoc committee identified earlier, it's a hundred and eighty-plus uses in the city. And of those, they're, they're split between these various zoning districts, including neighborhood commercial, the general commercial, professional office, research, development, like, like industrial zoning districts. Generally, I'd say in the broadest sense, it's a less intensive type of commercial activity, it's just target areas which tend to a but, single-family areas, as part of our general plan update. We made a more deliberate effort to rezone significantly areas which previously had general commercial to neighborhood commercial on, say, east of Bascom along and along Camden Avenue. But it, it, again, it translates not only to generally less intensive land use activities as you're seeing here, but also less intensive development pattern. So it has a lower like height, it has increased setbacks and other standards, you know, kind of go with it.
Pardon me, so you list five zoning districts there, but we have a lot of zoning districts which permit commercial uses, we have like the, the new mixed-use districts and so on. Do they, does all map to one of those?
They do, so under our, so it's a good comment, so the city has for, and I'll just use a single example. Let's say we have a professional office mixed-use zoning district. The reason why we named it such is so that it does more clearly benchmark to an otherwise existing, what was an existing zoning district. So those uses allowed in the professional office mixed-use zoning district would be the same as those allowed in the professional office zoning district. Okay, so they're really more or less combined.
So we really only have five types of commercial zones?
There's a little bit more in the, the fact that downtown has segmented uses, the per yard is regulated by master use permit, but in general, ninety-nine percent of the time, this is the, the four, the five issue. Alright, so with that, I just want to briefly, again, provide an overview of some of the zoning tools that are available at our disposal. The first which we had talked about is possible limits on the percentage of a use that may occupy a center. The example that's provided is that you could cap any given use, say, medical office to, to not occupy more than twenty percent of the gross floor area of a given property. This is largely intended to address over-concentration, to get at the prior point. City may do this for a variety of reasons, sometimes those businesses, although they very well be, a medical office might be very successful in a particular location, again. This is kind of getting at capitalism, right, like should this business, should the best business occupy the space? The city regulates over-concentration in more than one way, one is also by zoning, we have exclusionary zoning. So we have a zoning districts that say professional office doesn't allow retail to go in it, into those. And then conversely, we have a general commercial or neighborhood commercial area where we're generally favoring those retail activities. So by, it's by implementing a, in a, a over-concentration provision, you help preserve and protect your commercial areas to be occupied by. Retail or other uses which are identified, so that no one use dominates the center, you don't see the Hamilton Plaza shop, like a, the Santa Moss Plaza shop instead of turning to a suddenly. A medical complex overnight, where if those uses are able to out-compete them, pay greater rent, they possibly will, and they'll occupy the better spaces. Or they'll take the, the jewel box locations, locations which are up against the, the public right-of-way, areas where a retail business would really struggle to be interior to a site. They generally rely on greater visibility, which kind of brings us to the next zoning tool, which is, which is really getting at restrictions on placement. So another tool which we can introduce beyond just say capping the total percentage that it given use may occupy in a center. Is establishing thresholds, like say, hey, within those first fifty feet of a public right-of-way, we want to prohibit or, or restrict or require an additional permit process for certain uses. So if a medical office were to want to go up against the street, at a jewel box, great location that a retail business would really do well with that passerby traffic. Would it really, they really require that visibility, it might be part of their locational requirements to, to find. We would generally prevent that. Other examples of restrictions on placement, you speak to, I mean, in, in these updates, we looked at motor vehicle repairs. We're saying that, hey, those uses which are within five hundred feet of residential, that's a way of limiting the use, so that you're not, you're protecting sensitive uses. And there's also, again, like limit zoning is my last point here, it's where we have, tend, you tend to have like exclusionary zoning practice, you could say. This, within this zone is not allowed at all, or in this zone it might be permitted under a more permissive process than another. And again, these all, these all relate to those, you know, protecting desirable locations for uses that require it, so avoiding impacts sensitive uses and addressing over-concentration.
And I think ultimately, I mean, maybe the word over-concentration doesn't really justify it or make it clear enough, but ultimately, you're saying like, we want to have. A distribution of goods and services for the community, so that it's balanced.
Preserve a diversity of uses.
Yeah.
And we do have general plan policies which speak to that, that, that concept, I mean, over-concentration is used in our zoning ordinance describe. Alcohol, as we talked about in the prior item. Over-concentration is also used, say, in our research and development area for like studios and activities where we have a geospatial location, one. Business may not operate within proximity within five hundred feet of, say, another. It's like the gyms, a good example, health and fitness studios, this are restricted by over-concentration provisions. This is kind of a, it's a unique, eight on the same, it's, again, you could have multiple businesses operating side by side, a large shopping center, so long as they don't dominate the entire center. You could call something different possibly.
I asked a kind of a real world example. So if you look at Hamilton between Winchester and. There are a disproportionate number of medical-related by inspiration. Along most, along the street, there's, there's a bunch of foot doctors, dental offices and, and they're, they're in a bunch of little buildings and offices. That has seems to, even down to the walkings, there's a, there's one, there's a standard. And if you go up the street, especially on the north side of the street, if you're someone on the south side of the street, there are, what I would say. It's almost like an area of, of medical use, that I don't think you can find anywhere else in the city, other, other than near Caish. But so, it, at a different time, would we, in, in, in these days versus ten years ago or twenty years ago. Would we, would we be looking harder at putting in another medical building in a place like that?
Let's say even under our current code, medical is generally discouraged in those areas, because again, that, that run of properties from, say, West Campbell Ave, Avenue North on Winchester up to Hamilton, if I was hearing you correctly, that run.
On Hamilton Ave, from, from Winchester East towards, towards, you know, the.
Okay, so on Hamilton, okay, so those areas also are generally, general retail, there is a spattering, a mix of professional office uses. So again, some of those are even encouraged or allowed or by our zoning practices in those areas. I wouldn't say that we've changed that practice as part of the general plan update, so again, it's been evaluated on a site-by-site basis. Some of that area is going to be picked up as part of, if you go far enough east, like you're going all the way down to Frye's. Some of that's going to be picked up as part of the, the Hamilton Ave precise plan, so that you're often be evaluating this as part of that update. Okay, so just a, real quick on these other two, size thresholds is another example of a way of regulating land use. We can establish a cap, those businesses or operations which are generally broader community interest or concern could be brought forward to a, a public hearing or trigger a permit process. An example being if a business is over ten thousand square feet or twenty thousand, thirty thousand square feet, establish a line in the sand where that type of project, even where it would otherwise be denied warrants a public hearing process to consider. Then again, this speaks to the desire for public input for more significant projects. Lastly, establishing operational standards. The, one of the changes which we're considering is a change to allow for beer and wine, restaurants which serve beer and wine only. Be brought down from its permit process from a conditional use to administrative. As part of that, we may certainly establish operational standards, which help prevent some of those concerns that the police department might have or other, or just that we've observed historically, that the, our downtown includes a number of these already. Such as, in, in order to have such a business establishment, you must provide full-service food in the entire time that you're serving alcohol. This is a good business practice, you can't say, I'm a restaurant, but this is my thirty-minute window, get in all your food orders and entrees, and after that, we're going to stay open for beer and wine only for the rest of the night. We have other standards, like we're limiting high-top tables, total percentage of those, and allowing for separate standalone bars, such as examples of operational standards, which we can impose as part of this update process. Really intended to avoid some of those unintended consequences where, and otherwise benign use, something that won't cause a lot of controversy, but certainly could. So just in terms of practice, in the table that you have in the staff report, these are kind of the examples of those tools in play. So in red, these are where we're establishing a limit on the total percentage of the use, say, for studios, large studios, if it's less than twenty percent of the gross floor area of the property, then it might be subject to administrative process. It's more than that, it triggers a planning commission review, say, hey, are we now really starting to change the character of that shopping center or property? You'd have restrictions on placements, this is done through zoning, so that's the first one here in blue. Take for example, motor vehicles still limited to light industrial zones, it can also be done from a, a locational restriction, like it can be five hundred feet of a residential use. And then under size thresholds, again, you could say, even in these two categories, if it's over or under ten thousand, trigger a different permit process. Then finally, you can add very specific operational requirements which have taken into account observations, things which we'd like to avoid. observations, things which we'd like to avoid. It's a, even in these circumstances, it must abide by certain requirements. Okay, so that brings us to kind of the heart of tonight, which is these land use changes which have been considered as part of the update. On screen here, these are those uses which are switching from a conditional use permit process to a zoning clearance. These include our small studio uses as well as small tutoring centers. Retail stores up to ten thousand square feet would also be subject to a zoning clearance. Under larger sizes would be either administratively or approved through a conditional use permit as they go up in tiers. Really, the change here is also consolidating a number of distinct land uses which are kind of largely redundant or almost antiquated, like music studios and department stores, hardware stores, all kind of grouping together in a single category. Allowing for indoor amusement and entertainment in the general commercial zoning district when occupying less than a certain percentage of the center or property or when it's located more than fifty feet away from right of way. Allowing for cat and dog grooming facilities up to ten percent of the allowable area of the property. Again, using that same standard of fifty feet from a right of way in general commercial zones. And then under medical services and clinic, this is where we've become a little bit significantly more permissive, allowing them to occupy up to ten percent of an area of fifty percent of the right of way in a general commercial or neighborhood commercial area. Really going to move the needle for a lot of businesses that we've seen try to operate in the city and also just allowing it in the professional office zone. Additionally, our downtown, our pruneyard area already has this concept. It's a medical retail use. It's distinct land use, so it's best to equate it to the Lancecrafters. Where you'd go in, there's products predominantly that this is characterized by things for sale, but you might be to get a prescription to the back by an optometrist. This is providing for businesses which are generally characterized by that sale component with a very limited medical component being a, an activity which we allow by right. In the next tier up, these would be activities again, which are presently either conditional or otherwise prohibited, which would be switched to an administrative conditional use permit. Includes large and small studios and tutoring centers, grocery stores up to twenty thousand square feet, restaurants with beer and wine only in the general commercial area. It would remain beer and, beer and wine only restaurants would remain a condition used to the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Retail stores and general merchandise would be a lot of twenty thousand square feet. Through an administrative approval. Indoor amusement and entertainment centers, this could be like an escape room or something like that. It could be, this is presently prohibited, which is why it's in blue in the neighborhood commercial zone. This is now adding that use and also establishing it through an administrative permit process up to twenty percent of the floor area of the center. The same goes for cat and dog grooming facilities. Additionally, we're covering health and fitness centers, allowing up to ten thousand square feet in neighborhood commercial, general commercial zones, motor vehicle repair up to ten thousand square feet when located more than five hundred feet away from non-residential uses and light industrial zones. Restaurants and fast food and general commercial, medical services, clinics up to twenty percent of the area. And this is just a broad giveaway is the alternative fuels and recharging facilities. It wouldn't be a cap or any kind of restriction on these. They would just be allowable through an administrative additional use permit. All right. Well, thank you guys for getting through that list. I know there's a lot of changes discovered in the report as well. With that said, we did highlight two key discussion topics for the planning commission tonight to consider. Do the, the first is do the proposed changes achieve our goals and objectives? Again, we're trying to avoid those land use changes which require broader strategy or significant stakeholder engagement. This is alcohol, massage, wireless. Do we incorporate appropriate streamlining efficiency measures to support desirable uses in the city? And the second point, do the proposed changes with the zoning tools identify streamline uses where appropriate while avoiding unintended consequences? And just as additional thought, talking points here, are there possible land use impacts that maybe occur from these changes that should be addressed? And what additional zoning tools should be included to address those concerns? So with that, I would turn it back to the planning commission for discussion of deliberation and then we can cover next steps.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Let's start discussion.
Over here.
Do you have a question?
Not a question, but I wanted to just add a little bit to the discussion.
Oh, yeah, I'm terribly sorry. Yes, please. Yes, if Fields and Camp are having anything to add, obviously, yes.
So I just want to remind the commission as to why we started this effort. You know, the intent was to make Campbell the more business friendly city. The intent was to streamline the process they have to go through. Get their permits and get their permission to bring the businesses here. And all the things we're doing here, this is just planning. If you have started a business in Campbell or any city, this planning is not the only department you have to go through. You may have to go through public works, you gotta go through building, you gotta go through fire, you gotta go through environmental services. There's so many other cities. Planning tries to incorporate everything you want, but there's so many other requirements that a business has to go through. And so we are trying to do our part in making planning portion a little bit more streamlined and making the, our city more business friendly. While being very careful into the question that Stephen posts is not create unintended consequences. Not creating overconcentration, not creating, you know, so that's the, that's the goal, you know, and hopefully we can achieve it with these recommendations.
Does anyone here, let's do a round of if people have questions either for subcommittee members or for staff.
Yeah. Well, really, I think, thank Commissioner Gates and Camp Car, that was great. And I really, thank Commissioner Bookbinder who sparked this thing because this really is a good area for us to look at and get this thing going and and all, you know, this all really made sense. But I just wanted to ask Stephen just really quickly, so I'm not, I'm not nuts, because I did go through this report. And you really got to sit down and look at it. And so I imagine you guys, you know, I really praise you for that. But so a couple of the things that you brought up, they're not in our report, correct, that we got? Like when you said building from CUP to CC. Those aren't, those aren't in our actual report here, right?
They are, but the way that the table is structured, it might not read as clearly. This, this is just, this is just a way of grouping those changes together.
Individual ones exist. Yeah, I, well, and there was a pretty, and then again, you know what I like, and I hadn't seen this before, is the permit process slide that you put up there. That's not in our report, is it?
There's a, it's not as detailed, so it certainly doesn't indicate the time or the dollar amount, the general.
I guess what I'm getting to is I wish, I kind of wish that stuff had been in our reports because it just, this is so hard to see. And this, this is, this, this is a lot more helpful to me than the, the red Excel here because it's a lot to go through. But anyway, I do have a few questions. We use the, I just must be standing fifty, fifty feet from right of way for a bunch of different things. Why, why is that, has that been a standard thing forever?
The only parallel I can provide is in the downtown, we used to have a fifty foot threshold for ensuring that businesses which fronted along the primary right of way, the Eastham Avenue, were preserved and protected for retail and personal service, but kind of pushed personal service to the back. Retail restaurants would be above the street. The idea behind that fifty foot requirement was again, those uses which are above the street generally rely on that visibility, that for traffic to survive. And then other uses like the medical office or the destination land use, you don't really, you're not really driving down the street or something like, oh, I need to go get a, you know, like crown fixed in my tooth. That's kind of the idea behind it.
I only asked it because I can't remember that ever coming up as an issue with any of the items we've had early ages. Fifty feet from the right, by right of way, what, what do you mean by right of way?
It's, it's a public right of way, it's a street. Property lying up against the park of the city, like.
Sidewalk?
Sidewalk, yes.
Okay.
The back of sidewalk.
You know where Bank America is in Pruneyard? Getty Corner. Yeah. Across where there's the burger place. No, no, I, I, on the other side of Baskin. Yeah, okay, so there's a shopping center there. It's got burger place, pizza place, odd pizza, whatever. And, and then there, and then there's additional building. And we approved a medical office in the back part of the building. That would have been a problem theoretically, right? If it had been on Baskin.
So that's a good example. So that's asking the planning of the question, would if the odd pizza and the habit burger be occupied by a medical office used to be fifty feet of that right of way, that make as much land use sense as it puts the interior of the shopping center?
Yeah, all right. I'm not doubting that. Just was wondering why it was in there. There was something, yeah, it's hard to answer my questions here because I do have specific ones. Allowing fast food drive-through in the general commercial is administrative CUP. Is that, is that what we're doing? Is that a change? That seemed like a little one that was a little.
I thought it was without. Yeah, so to clarify, it would allow for fast food restaurants without a drive-through. So we're trying to make.
Oh, without a drive-through.
Correct. So drive-through is separately regulated. And so drive-throughs are kind of, they kind of add to a use that kind of glue on. So you could have a drive-through pharmacy or drive-through restaurant. So this would be just fast food without a drive-through.
We intentionally avoided doing it.
All right.
For the efficiency reason because drive-throughs have historically attracted a bunch of comments.
Yeah, yeah, potential consequences. I think you guys did a good job on that. And there, I guess there were no worries about overproliferation in terms of recharging and alternative fuel facilities. That didn't come up.
I, I think that was one that Commissioner Camp Car, he's always so great, asking about charging stations that we just put our
Nice to have them, but I.
Down and this was, I think, our input. We just basically said, we want this to be a green city. Let's make this as low barrier as possible for sort of future energy green sort of recharge stations or maybe even stuff we haven't imagined yet. So that's why that one is so.
Yeah, I, I think it's fair. Obviously, we want that, but I, I don't know if there's an overproliferation or overconcentration, whatever terminology we want to use, issue kind of thing.
I would offer just one added clarification on this. It's a, this would be operating as a standalone use. The city, throughout the city, you see it's recharging stations.
Right, yeah.
Junction with another business. This means if you wanted to take over, say, an entire property, just put alternative fueled recharging facilities on that site.
Right.
City does not have any of these in the city presently.
Yeah.
Being entirely distinct.
But my special, that's what my question still holds. So for that kind of, we wouldn't, we want to be worried about it, overconcentration. It's a report.
Commissioner, we're going to get to that point.
Let's not worry about it.
I bet Small has that. It's like a Tesla supercharger station.
Yeah, like Highway one oh one.
And, and again, this is where I think the admin CUP helps. Like, let's say it's twenty years from now and Rob's still doing his job and he's on his twentieth recharge station. We could elevate one of these to the planning commission. We could say, do we want to revisit the municipal code?
Sure.
We have too many of like, we aren't going all the way to like complete unregulation, I think is where we landed on this.
I just want one final question about move land use distinction for music stores, secondhand thrift stores. Well, you know what, never mind. That's my notes. One question would be, and there's something on secondhand thrift stores. I guess we're excluding nonprofits for some reason. I, I don't know why that would be.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So the idea here is that we have a lot of distinct activities in our landing table. Again, one hundred and eighty-six distinctions between land uses. The idea is between retail stores, which are just selling general merchandise, it doesn't matter what type of widget you're selling, if you're selling a widget, that's your general land use activity. So the consolidation between the music studios, the secondhand thrift stores, department stores, hardware stores was intended to achieve those kind of efficiency measures where it doesn't really matter exactly what you're selling, if you're selling it. The distinction specifically to secondhand and thrift stores was to clarify that those uses which do not have a donation component would be grouped in that, in that definition. So if you have a donation, so you're dropping things off or people, and these do tend to have externalities with them. That's a different issue. It will sometimes have people just dump couches on the side of the street and other problems that come with them. So we wanted to keep those in a higher permit process as well.
Okay, let's see. Anyway, I think you guys really did a good job. I like, you know, looking at all, at the issues, you know, with the twenty percent type of item as a, as a fail safe measure, et cetera. I think we're on the right path. I think a lot of good stuff here, so thank you.
Yes, let's see. So I'm going to feel stupid after this question. What's a studio?
I, I like to describe it as like, like if you had a karate studio, it's like if you're getting some basic one-on, like one-on-one or small group sessions where you're learning a usually physical fitness activity.
Yeah.
As, which is the key differentiator between tutoring studios, which are generally more academically focused and generally have a certain program associated with them. So that, that is an example of a studio. You could also have a paint studio.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah.
So the tutoring centers, large versus small, and then you refer to, you don't put a number on that. You refer to a twenty-one dot thirty-six dot two forty-three. How do we determine what's a large versus small tutoring center?
It's generally described, it's those uses which are having twelve or more, twelve or fewer participants at any given time. Twelve or fewer, small, twelve or more.
I can't, can't remember whether you're allowing in convenience stores with grocery stores or not.
We are. So under fifty-four, it's actually on the slide here, you're seeing that we'd be grouping together both convenience markets and stores as well as meat markets under the broader definition of grocery store.
All right. And you're using a square footage to distinguish, distinguish?
Correct. So up to twenty thousand square feet would be permitted through an administrative permission experiment. Beyond that, it'd be conditioning experiment.
Okay, the, the term liquor, liquor establishments, those are, those are restaurants and bars? Are those, that include liquor stores? I just, there's so much stuff here.
It's a great question. It's, it's largely, we're identifying the need to clean up some of our definitions as far as this update is kind of like a miscellaneous bucket. Generally, any business which is selling alcohol is considered a liquor establishment irrespective of how, if it's onsite, offsite, onsite consumption. Your liquor establishment.
Would it make sense to break it up into distinction, distinction? You know, I know we have special, you know, like with liquor stores, we, we're careful about where we allow liquor stores, right? I haven't run into one since I've been on this commission, but I know that there's special requirements.
Code already provides for certain exceptions. If you're a grocery store or certainly in your, as opposed to a convenience market or store, you're pulled out of the overconcentration provisions, I believe, from a land use regulatory perspective. So if you were operating a brand new, like a liquor store where all you're selling is liquor and you want, wanted to open up a brand new liquor store right next to it, we look at the overconcentration findings under our code. That same liquor store to open up next to a grocery store that had a full, you know, service of, you know, milk, eggs, cheese, all that other stuff. That particular combination is not reviewed the same way. We're actually looking as part of this update process to also make amendments to those findings about overconcentration of liquor establishments. Making clear that beer and wine, restaurants with beer and wine only would also be excluded from the overconcentration provisions.
And, and so I have a more general question about this whole thing because there was so much to take in. So you know, do, do cities have standards? Are there best practices for this? Or is like, if we were to look at fifty other California cities, would there really be there are similar in our size? Would, would it really be a mish, mishmash stuff to, would they have the same kind of problems? Or is there a, a, a best practices that have been established that says, this is the way you should do this?
I, I would candidly say it varies by community.
I think one thing in the economic development report. I think one thing in the economic development report that also struck our eyes is that the feedback was that Campbell was harder than neighboring towns for some of these uses, and so I like briefly looked at the code, and it's, it's like a mess, I have a lot of respect for the work the planners do, but like, it seems like just a random collection of things that happen in each city over time. So we did look at like, you know, Cupertino is super liberal about any kind of pet activity, like they have overnight pet boarding, for example, pet grooming, like every type. Why? Who knows, like a set of decisions over time.
There, there, there are intersections that expand.
Plus, it's trying to slander other towns, but I think the answer. Yeah, so the answer to your question is, it is like all over the place, but we, we, as part of the input for this, looked at Los Gatos, Saratoga, Cupertino, what are they doing just to help inform, like, are we like way off face?
Is there anything in particular that we are weirdly, weirdly strict about?
I think it's things we were addressing here, like particularly the first, the top four uses, like, I think some neighboring town, like permitted one of them, and we still were making everybody come and spend six months and trot up here and do it. So, uh, I don't, it, it, it's hard to distri, like, it's, there's a hundred and eighty uses and they're also different, so it wasn't like a huge thematic.
It's a high dimensionality problem.
It's like, I think like Campbell's thing on massage use is just a good example of like, a town has a history, one bad incident happens, all of a sudden it informs a bunch of laws. People are still asking themselves thirty years later, why are we like this? I mean, like, that's just how local governance happens.
I just have one other question, you mentioned unintended consequences, so have you, have you come up with anything that says, oh, you know, if you do this, there's some unintended consequences, consequences that I've actually thought of?
You know, I'd speak to the, the change to restaurants to allow for beer, with beer and wine only being brought down permit process, but we're introducing, as part of this update, we'll look at implementing new operational standards. Say, if you operate that same restaurant, you have to have chairs in it, that you can't just have all high talk, you know, high table rounds standing room only, and a, and a dedicated bar, which is, you know, you shut off food service at, you know, five P M. So these are, these are examples of how you could prevent an unintended consequence. Some of these uses already have operational standards, like motor vehicle repair facilities, that are good examples, with a special use section of our code, which largely already speaks to how you should go about screening those activities and the like. We'd like to go maybe a step further to address some of the, the impacts, this is not necessarily an unintended consequence, but it's something which would, observationally, our code enforcement officer is also involved as part of the ad hocs of these efforts. And one of the things that he would, that, that, that position would need is the ability to enforce onsite parking requirements, which are imposed on those uses. And a key part of that is requiring a ledger, so they can actually have an accounting of the vehicles that are on the property, so that you know when they're parking vehicles that are under their, their custody control, they're on the street, those are associated with that use. That's a, that is an update that we'd include as part of it. Some of these other things, like the twenty percent on medical office use, I mean, these are practices, I mean, they are used on other communities, as Cupertino's mentioned earlier. They do have such a requirement in some of their sections of their code, I mean, every community regulates land use a little bit differently. They do it through having a multiplicity of different zoning districts, they could do it through very restricted parking standards, you've seen that locally done to some extent, so there's different tools, they just turn these knobs to get desired land use outcomes. I think the tools which are presented here do represent some of the best, the best, the better practices. They can absolutely, over years, be further refined and developed, as we see how they're implemented.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Jessica, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Um, this might be outside of the scope of what we're talking about, but I'm, I'm, I'm for, you know, helping small businesses and businesses, being a business-friendly city, but I'm curious if you foresee like impacts towards city revenue as far as like, I, I would imagine permitting is a pretty good revenue stream, I don't know. That versus allowing businesses to flourish and getting more tax revenue from that, I don't know, I'm curious on that.
I, yeah, I would, if I could, I would just comment, uh, initially, that cities are prohibited from charging fees that exceed the actual cost of providing the permitting services. So it's not a moneymaker for the city. Usually it's less than a break even.
We're not, we're not making profits.
Okay, good to know.
But at the same time, it could be a moneymaker if more businesses are attracted to our city that wouldn't have otherwise been.
Bacon's is not great for the community, so hopefully help the trust of the citizens.
Right, yeah, we don't want to see this sitting up to. And then, we kind of talked about this, but did you look at any examples of like, this is something we don't want to become? Like bad examples, it's not to slander any cities again.
I think, I think almost by design, we only did stuff that either this body has previously looked at and been like universal thumbs up, or the city's economic development report, which has been like quite exhaustive, um, looked at. Or, you know, Commissioner Camp Car and I talked with a couple of retail brokers, city staff, uh, code enforcement, to make sure we didn't do like a use that was going to attract like a lot of noise or parking, and so I think, I think our goal was to do just what you're asking, which is don't introduce a use where like five years from now, someone would say, why, why did this silently happen? Because of a change here like that, that was the goal.
Yeah.
It's just the stuff that was inefficient, because we were making someone spend the time to come here. Like those two, the, the couple gym owners we've seen recently are just good examples of that, like, in the future, the guy could just open his gym a couple months faster, if all the other stuff lines up he has to do to unpermitting and everything else.
Well, I want to think that ad hocs subcommittee guys really did an awesome job, and, uh, you know, from the comments from the staff and the director, it was very thorough and, uh, well-respected, so I appreciate all of that, great work. Um, I think that it's very exhaustive, very, you know, included a lot of critical thinking, took the considerations that we've all discussed really to heart, working with planning, so I, you know, beyond the question around the over-concentration and potentially, you know, somewhat of a philosophical slash discussion, I think the the metrics around limiting a particular use to twenty percent does make sense, because you're saying that one in five is going to be a use, and if it's going to be more than that, it's going to be reviewed, right? It's not really automatically being excluded, it just has a higher threshold, so I think in the spirit of providing a lot of different experiences and products to the community, it really does make sense, and it does lower the threshold, which is the bigger concern, so. Very supportive, and I hope we can move this forward quickly.
Okay. I, I had one question, which is, does the fifty-foot setback section, it's not only applied at the first floor, we have multi-floor establishments?
Yes, the, I don't want to say the devil's the details, we haven't written up the ordinance yet, but as it had applied to downtown, it had only applied to the first floor, so other floors were excluded from that, so presumably present the same.
Okay. And still the thing is, I, I really appreciate a hundred and eighty different land uses, so many different land uses, and being able to, like, I, I don't exactly know what meat market is, I've never been to a meat market, I guess they're not that common. I appreciate the consolidation, for example, of all these different types of retail that don't really need to be distinguished into, you know, retail. So, it's a, I, like, this looks, I, I have, I'm a little nervous about moving things into a process that still adds a two to four month delay. But at the same time, that seems a lot less risky for them. And we're moving a lot of things to be a zoning clearance. So this, this seems like you're striking a balance between wanting to prevent things from being entirely essentially entirely ministerial and having them use the full process. I, I absolutely understand the balance being struck there. Yeah, I thi- I think this is really impressive work, like you guys, I, I remember when this started off, and it was like, oh, we're gonna streamline four uses, and it turns out there's just a lot of, I guess I'm gonna say low hanging fruit, like things that were kind of at least semi-obviously, why are we doing this, this seems like a poor idea. So, so really great set of streamlining, and I'm really excited that this is going to go to the council alongside the economic development plans, they'll be able to just adopt, as opposed to say, we'll figure this out next year. Really great job. Um, I realize I said those were questions, does anyone have any further comments, or have we all kind of given our thoughts? Yes, thank you very, very much, so.
Can I just thank staff for, you know, doing all this, because again, we did start with sort of the, we were gonna do four, and then I know how busy you guys are, but we did a couple rounds, and, uh, yeah, no, but I mean, I, I'm very excited about like the, the full depth that we ended up doing here, so just thank you guys for putting in the time.
I'll just say it's a serious player, I have many commissions in some areas, but I've continually been impressed by the commissions here in some areas, I'm saying that. It was a good pairing of research and enthusiasm, the commissioners with the technical details and staff. No, I'll echo the same, I'll say the technical research is done by the economic subcommittee, going back years of old condition experiment that had dawned kind of short, but this, the uses that have not been exceedingly controversial is rather impressive. All right, so with that, that kind of brings us to our next steps, so just as a recap. Good decision was made tonight, we've got excellent feedback from, from all of you. We do plan to pass this on to the city council for a study session meeting on the same, that will be held on December fifth. We do plan on incorporating all of these changes we've talked about in actual red lines and strikeout changes to the Campbell municipal code, which would be returned for review by the planning commission, and again, we'll be adopting this with as part of the economic development plan, it's our current strategy. That concludes, yes. Item, I think the, I don't know if we have a director report. One. I like to take notes. Is there a director's report? Really, really quick, uh, so at the last meeting, and around the city council did review the recommendations you had in your last meeting on the affordable housing overlay zone. I'll say in general, the council, my notes, uh, generally, have recommendations consistent with that. Some of my notes were, they wanted a complimentary affordable housing overlay zone, uh, competitive, wanted citywide, except the residential areas, got the same recommendations. On the areas to focus on, just to report back, I heard interest in deeper affordability projects, and they were hesitant, there was one thought on allowing developers to move where they put their affordable housing units in a project, and at least a few council members, I'll push back. And then on the last item, you might remember, we had asked, where should the station be allowed by rights zoning? This is a mandatory part of my state law, and they supported option three, which was protect areas that are zoned for mixed use. Not allow the areas that have mixed use to be subject to a procedure where you're going to take the mixed use away eventually. Uh, so you know, next steps, and Stephen's working on this, we're going to do outreach with affordable housing developers, market rate developers, overlay zones, anticipate the actual ordinance is coming back. And that, the only last thing that I have to report is, we're narrowing in on a housing manager candidate, we have some final candidates we're talking to, we're making off of sometime in the next week or two. Good news there is, we'll have someone wholly dedicated to our housing programs, and that'll free up Mr. Rose from his theoretic forty percent of his time on housing to be a full-time.
Quick question. What, uh, what was the city, what was the council's opinion on the use of ministerial approval as an incentive for affordable housing overlay zone?
I don't, you know, I would use, we have more notes, I don't tense conversation on that. They did have some questions on fees, there was a lot more questions on undergrounding.
I, I did watch a part of that, yes.
Right, or should we reduce the fees for undergrounding, but I do not recall much discussion.
All right, okay.
All right. This is just, I, I, I was talking to a friend who's a resident, and we were commenting on my park looks, parks look, and you got, and they're being used, so he asked me the question, he said, no, they're on city property. Right? So can anybody use the parkland, or are we leasing them to the restaurants so that they have, they can control the use of the parkland?
So, so. So, so. Encroachment permit, all the other permits. So you should, they get the right to use that piece of public land for seating.
So they could restrict.
It is very nice to see the park lots in use. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention is that I, I got to meet with a member of the city council who said that, I know there was some concern here that we're exceeding our remit by doing a lot of policy work, and they said they're really happy that we're taking on that work, so like, I don't, we are, as far as I know, not stepping on anybody's toes, I know is a concern. Does anybody have anything else to add? Uh, I'll adjourn to the next meeting of, you know, the date, I'll actually say it out loud. November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.